This meeting of the Tyler Iste Board of Trustees is called to order. The presence of quorum, the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thanks everybody for being here. We're gonna jump right into our redistricting presentation and excited to see what you have for us here.
Thank you all. Thank you trustees for having us here. We have Josh on the line who's our GIS person who is projecting his screen for you right now. What I'd like to do is start with the initial assessment population summary total chart. So you saw this the last meeting we came here and presented. So this shows the total population of people who live within the districts as they are right now. And it shows us at the bottom left, the overall deviation of 15.2%. And as you probably recall from that meeting, we need to get the deviation down below 10. So I'd like to start with this chart just so we can refresh ourselves on where we are, what the problem is, where the population imbalance is, and what we need to do to solve it. Josh, if you could move to the PDF of the total districts or what the districts look like right now. So this is the current map of the districts. This is what everything looks like right now. And Josh, if we could go to the Plan A, which you should have in front of you members. Josh, can you go to Plan A's district map? Or maybe just pull it up in Edge, that's easier. Okay. So here we have Plan A. You have these printed in front of you. And you can see the changes we made. So the current boundaries as they are today before any changes are the thick red lines. The shaded area shows the proposed changes in Plan A. And the overall goal from the initial assessment was to move population from four to one and kind of using two as a pass through to do that. So what we did, you can see two took some population from four and then one took some population from two. So we kind of shifted that around. And that is really the major change you see in this plan. So what we can do is, Josh, if you can go into Edge, Edge is the program we use to draw. So we can zoom in anywhere you like and see, why don't we start with, Josh, zoom in on the new territory District Two acquired from Four. And you can see that new boundary line is gonna follow, I can't see it from here, Josh, what's the highway there on the southern boundary? 724, is that right? Yes.
Yeah, 724, that's correct.
724. So that will be the new southern boundary line. And then you can see it follows the kind of squiggly line on the left-hand side should be a river or a creek. Is that right, Josh? What's the name of it?
I believe that's Prairie Creek.
Prairie Creek. So that is, go ahead, I'm sorry, Josh.
I believe that, must've got that wrong. Oh, that's correct. Sorry about that, Prairie Creek.
Okay. So it follows Prairie Creek up to the highway and then continues north. And that is Highway 49, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that would be the new boundary under this plan. And again, that keeps in line with our goal of following natural boundaries, identifiable boundaries, highways, rivers, things like that, bodies of water. So that's why the boundaries are where they are. And then Josh, can we go over to the difference between one and two? And again, the thick red line is the boundary as it is right now. The shaded area to the west of that line is the proposed change. And Josh, what is that that it follows? It looks like a...
That's Texas College Road.
Texas College Road?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that's Texas College Road that goes down. Josh, if you could zoom out a little and go south. And then it intersects again at Loop 322, or 323, I'm sorry. And that would be the proposed boundary under this plan. And then you can see the chart at the bottom is the same chart I started with. We started with here today. It's just updated with the demographics and population of this plan. So you can see under this plan, District, Josh, could you make that chart a little bigger? I can't see District One's numbers on there. If you could drag that up a little, a little more. Okay. So you can see here that District Five would be the smallest district under this plan. District Four would be the largest district. The other districts are really unchanged because we didn't change any territory to them, but of course their percentages may change slightly just because of the average. But that brings the overall deviation in the top right-hand side of the screen, you can see in blue under Plan Development, is 8.59%. So that brings the deviation from smallest to the largest district below 10%, and it brings it to 8.59%. So what I'd like to do is hear y'all's feedback from it and see if you want to make any changes. What Josh can do is if you want to see some variation of this, he can grab territory and move it from one district to another and see what we'll see in real time as he adds the territory, how it affects the population and then the demographics as you move across the bottom of the screen in those columns from left to right. Okay. It appears that District Four and Two and a little bit of One are the most impacted by this, and we're really not touching most of the other ones. Does anybody on the board have any comments or curiosities on that? I mean, this is our one opportunity every 10 years we have to actually kind of adjust this. I personally do like to have things blocked off very good. I know there's some notches here and there in my district that I would, I mean, I'm not gonna die on any hill or anything, but I'd like to see what we could do. But does anybody else, I want to give the board the opportunity to comment and just give their thoughts on how this all looks. Especially maybe people who have been through it before. I guess that's Andy. I guess now you're the only one. And how much it matters to y'all, you know, to this exercise.
Yeah, I would just say that I think this looks good from what I can tell. I love the boundaries. Easy to understand. There's no, nothing funny going on. I would hesitate to start getting into the core of town and messing with moving three streets over or one street up or, you know. I don't think it's gonna matter, number one. So I feel like it's served us well and I would not have gotten, I've not gotten any complaints over these districts. So I would say let's change part of that.
Okay.
The boundary along 64 that has that little notch, go ahead, that's not changed, is it?
It has not. We looked at it and discussed it after we made this plan and sent it to you all. It was pointed out to us and if you want to look at it, we looked at it. I think it's a change we can make if you want. I'm not sure why it was done 10 years ago, but it may have been for some population, it was 12 people. I did the rough math on it on my phone.
I think it's probably needs to stay like that.
Okay. If we stay like that, it may make your deviation go up to 8.88% if we shifted it from two into four. Four's still a little big and, you know, two's still a little small. So yeah, it's not a big change, but if you want it to follow the road, Josh, if you could zoom in on that area we looked at earlier. I think probably what it was, was a census block issue and sometimes the census blocks don't follow the roads the way we may want them to. So it's that little notch there, you know, I don't think it's gonna affect anything where it naturally belongs according to the geography. I think would be in four, but it could go into three.
Like I said, I think it needs to stay where it is.
Okay.
Where is that?
And I'm sorry, I missed that, Phil. But you wanted me to move that into District Four? No, Josh, just leave it the way it is. Can you show how many people live there? Pull up the little chart. Yeah. So 12 people. You can see the bottom, that blue box on the left at the very bottom says population, 12. So that's how many people live in the box he's highlighted. So it really wouldn't affect anything if you wanted to move it. It's completely up to you or leave it the way it is.
By the boundaries of that, I see that I can't tell the street very clearly, but...
Josh, what's that road to the north end of that block?
64.
It's 64? Okay.
Okay, okay.
And then, I can't, you know what, just from knowing that area, it's...
Yeah, I read in the area, it's in there.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's pretty far east. It's pretty far east of Greenbrier.
Yeah. That's his home.
Where's Dixie at in there?
I don't know.
Is that 1135? Is that County Road 1135?
Dixie Elementary is just south of it.
You could be right.
Right?
Right, that lower red line.
County Road 1135, is that the same as Patton?
Is that Patton? No, I see Patton right there, west of Tyler Memorial Cemetery.
Oh, okay, there you go, okay.
I see, where's Green Dog?
It's the...
Can he pull the sound up just a little?
Yeah, Josh, can you scroll to the south just a little bit?
That's already there.
That's off the road, send it back that way, Dixie.
So that's, that notch is just east of Dixie.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
In fact, that's Patton, right?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
County Road. So that church of Christ that's over there is actually in that.
Right.
Yeah. The burnt out gas station that's right there on the, on 64 and the, and Patton. That's inside of that.
My concern is just off of Greenbrier, it's a little one called Poland, you know, on the way in.
We're aware of that. We're aware of that.
Okay, good.
Yes, that's not the notch.
Okay. Just to make sure.
We checked on those things, as did the firm, the consultant. So y'all are, you can move that notch in, up or down whichever one y'all chose to do if you wanted to.
Yeah, or leave it the way it is.
It does split a precinct?
It does split a precinct. I'm not sure, perhaps for some reason we did it in 2011, but it does split a precinct and it would, by bringing it up, it would put it in line with, because it does naturally go with four and that precinct that is over there, which is...
73.
73.
Josh, can you show us the voting precincts?
If you start, but I do believe, if you start, we talked about this, if you start getting into things like that...
That's the precinct that would naturally...
You may wind up causing some problems elsewhere. Y'all make that one. How many of those split precincts do we have?
I think it needs to stay where it is.
You can see them.
Right.
Okay. Sure.
Anybody else have any comments or questions about this?
Since I'm being approached on most of that and I look at it, it looks fine. I don't have any problems with the problem. I think I'm just too...
You're the most, you're gaining the most.
I don't see a problem with the line that I'm fitting. I believe the job's been relatively easy and all that with it, if it's shifted, I don't have a problem with this under way. I know that that little notch there is close to Yvonne, Yvonne area over there. That was, trying to figure out exactly where it was. That is very close to where it is close to that area.
And that could have been why it was carved out. It could have been where somebody lived.
Right.
I'll say that, you know, as someone that has had contested elections, you know, protecting people that we asked to represent them can be somewhat of a concern and certainly you want to be territorial about that, but at least for those of us that have had to have to do that, we're not affected. So I have absolutely no concerns with this. This looks great to me. It's up to you guys that, that it impacts for sure, but...
Well, any, any curiosities I have naturally bleed into you. So our smallest district, you know, that area, it looks like the TJC's around, Precinct 22. I always just kind of wondered why that's notched out. But, I mean, it's been that way and nobody cares, then, like I said, and, and the area, you know, north of Fifth and west of, I think Broadway, in between, I guess it's Precinct 43, the northern part, up to 70, I've always wondered kind of, you know. I'm like the Azalea District kind of, but then there's a notch out to the west and then my southern boundary is always generally Fifth Street except for around TJC. And, but like I said, that, that kicks off a domino effect that would make us have to take some out of like District Seven and put it into Five or something like that, or even District Six and, you know. It is, it's something we could look at, that is, I could tell you, when we drew with the county, we were in this area as well. There's a decent bit of people in this area. And I want to say, maybe that, if you look at the, the first page of y'all's packet that has District One on it, you can see at the very bottom center, just above big number five is 22. That's a voting precinct, 22. And I think there's 1,000 people in that district as law rec election. So those areas are pretty heavily populated. We could look at squaring things up if you want, if, but it will move some people around and when you're, when you're, when you're, your target number is 18,000, 18 and a half thousand, moving 1,000 people, you know, is a big, is a big chunk. No doubt. No doubt. And, you know, I have my little ideas, but that they trigger off of an entire... And if everybody's okay with it, then I'm, I'm fine with it. I just like big, non, kind of wiggled in type of orders naturally. So that was my only thought. I'm the same way. But it, part of it is geography, you know, itself, the way the census blocks are mapped. So looking again at that, 22 is a great example. Why is it shaped the way it's shaped, right? I mean, it's a weird shape. And there's the census blocks within it that make it up. It's a voting precinct, so it is composed of census blocks. But it is itself oddly shaped. And so if, and then within it, I bet if we drill into the census blocks in that area, you'll see they're even oddly shaped. So why they make the shapes they do is odd, but it does, from kind of a macro standpoint, when we look at trying to make things look square, it does hinder us because you end up with kind of odd triangles. Then of course, as you get to the edge of the city or the school district or whatever, you're gonna get edges because they're not square. Well, I'm sure there was a trade 10 or 20 years ago.
There was a trade for seven and five and one were involved last time because I was in one, but five had smaller numbers and I remember seven had to give up this little notch in the middle that went over to five. And then I think one picked up a hair to the west there for that notch, if I remember right last time. And I would imagine seven will continue to grow, so there may be, 10 years from now, it may be that we have to do that again between seven and five more.
Yeah. Yeah, I was kind of thinking, well, I'm not gonna go. If nobody's interested in doing any of this, then I'll leave it at that. Anybody else have any comments? Ms. Atkins, does everything look okay to you?
I'm not affected that much.
Right, yeah. Okay. Well, anybody else? Easiest, easiest one you've done, man?
I'm sure.
Well, actually, the city, the city liked the map we drew for them too, so that went pretty well. So I think right now we have another meeting scheduled for, another drawing session scheduled, is that correct, Gina?
We do. We have it set for December the 2nd and that will be coupled with a public hearing that day.
Okay. So what we can do is you all can, you know, think about this, publish it online, get comments and feedback, and then we'll have a public hearing as well and you can get feedback, you know, live there. And then we'll have an opportunity at that point to make, do this exact same thing and make any changes if you get feedback that people don't like, something. And again, I think, as David emphasized at the initial assessment, it's important to remind people that this does not affect attendance zones because that is, you know, probably something you'll hear a lot of is, you know, I'm gonna have to go to a different middle school than I want. And this is not that, so... Right. Out of curiosity, can I just ask a couple of questions just so I can know? Yes, sir. In my mind. And this is a GIS question for Josh. So Precinct 43, north of Fifth Street, up to 70. You see where that is? It's in District Five? Yeah. Josh, if you could go over to where Five, One, and Three intersect just south of downtown, Precinct Number 37, or 43. Let's see. Yeah, right there. Okay. We've got it. Okay. He's right in the center, so it's hard, it's a lot of zeros on 43. You see Fourth and Fifth Street just north of his mouse, right there? Yeah. Could he, could he draw, I guess... Yeah, let's look at the blocks and see what they look like. So the blocks are, it looks like city blocks in this area. So you can, you know, that's part of a voting precinct that you can, you can select the blocks within it. So you want to select all the blocks north of Fifth? North of Fifth. I'm just curious as to how many people, you know, and go all the way, you know, break it down. Have a natural... All right, so we have 459 people. Okay. And then one other question on, in District Seven, Precinct 50, on Five's western border. The little, yeah, right there. Is that north of Fairland? Yeah, go on down though. I just want to know, I want to know how many people are north-ish of Sunnybrook as it goes over and intersects Old Jacksonville Highway from Broadway. Okay. Go a little further south, Josh? Just out of curiosity, I'm just playing around. I'm free. Where, those are stuff. Okay. Is it from the Loop up? No.
Fairland. It's a pretty clear...
You can do, you can do Fair. Okay. Josh, scroll to north. Okay. So select that territory on that triangle. Is that what you're looking for here? And then go all the way up to, yeah, just to, yeah. Just out of curiosity. 1,000 people. 1,000 people. 1,078. Okay. Okay. Oh, actually, that's telling us, Josh, we deselect the squares to the north. Oh, no, no, not leave that, the first squares we select up are Ford Street. So I think that's being included until, sorry. That's 500, 500? Yeah, so it's probably 500, 500, but we can get more exact. Yeah, 619. Okay. So you get 619 north of Fair and 459 north of Fifth. That was, I'm playing with your district, so, sorry. Okay. Anybody else have any?
If you change, if you change those numbers, you got to take the 1,000 from somebody else.
Of course, yeah. It'd be me.
Yeah.
I mean, sorry, no. But yeah, that's what I'm saying. I realize that. Okay. Anybody else have any fun map questions or curiosities while we got the GIS guy online?
Go, go south to, just so we can go over this, because I know this is one, one thing that did come up. Go south to where Seven is, the confluence of Seven and Six. Very bottom.
Very far south, Josh, all the way down.
I'm sorry, all the way down the line.
Yeah. So right there where Six connects.
So Tina, what were we talking about before?
He's talking about the lines that you think that needs to be verified and...
Yeah. Josh, if you could zoom in where Six connects at that kind of bridge. So the boundaries of this map, the kind of the, Josh will probably disagree with me calling it the base layer because there's, the base layer is actually the street map, but the contours of the red lines we see that define the boundaries of the district in this map are based on information we got from the county. It is slightly different in this area and at some points kind of along the edges from the 2011 boundaries. So the, what we call the benchmark, right, what we started with. So this boundary, because this map is based on the, the shape file, which is a type of file, it's like a PDA, a Word document or something. Because the contours of this map, the boundaries that were defined by the shape file we got from the county, we can't show this southern boundary the way it is, but in this area, the boundary of the district does come a little further south than it shows where Seven. So Six does actually connect and it connects currently. It's just on this map, there is, this little line has, I don't know if it's an error or what to call it, but it's, it is not connecting there because the line's off. And it's, it's really kind of a, I don't know, Josh can explain it better to me. I know Sharon McCollum is our head GIS person can, but it's really, it's kind of just the definition of a map that is on.
I just wanted Ms. Harrison to understand that, that's, that, that district is contiguous down there. It's just not showing on the updated 2021s, but it's there under 2011. And so they're, the conversation was they're gonna go back and try to fix that inside the GIS system. try to fix that inside the GIS system, that we're likely better.
Yeah, in my understanding from calling to Sherry is, it's, you really have to get into like the very granular detail of the map in order to make a change like that, because it's, it's just kind of happened, it's like the basic layer of the map. And so in order to get in there and do it, you kind of, I'm not entirely sure how you do it, it's beyond my pay grade, but, um, it, it can be done, it's just, it requires some detail of going in there and doing it. So, uh, I know she's going to look at it and, and fix it, uh, but it is, it's just kind of, um, really more of a software error than anything.
I guess that's the area probably east of Jack that's on the east side of Elk River. There's a little natural preserve down there. I don't think there's, and just south of the water treatment or the sewer treatment facility.
It's right where the, the toll road is, so if you look at the twenty-eleven map, the toll road isn't there, but the area where the toll road is, that looks like it's in the county on this map on the screen, uh, is part of the district, the ISD, um, whereas here it's not. And so I, I don't know if maybe the county adjusted it for some reason, because of the toll road or something like that, and maybe one thought, I, I, I don't know exactly why the county line shifted, but it, it did.
And y'all expect to have that probably corrected the next, by the next time?
Oh, yes, sir, it'll be corrected by the next time, for sure. Um, I think, you know, we'll get on it as soon as we can. I think it's, um, we have, the counties are all wrapping up by the end of, most of them will be done by the end of this week, but the end of next week's their deadline. So, um, after that, the GIS capabilities of our office expands greatly.
Sure. Anybody else have any other questions? Comments? Okey-dokey. Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So we'll, uh, we'll just review it, I'm sure. Sounds like it's a good plan. And then we'll come back to it the next opportunity we have.
Okay.
All right. Uh, let's see here. Okay. So that's it for our redistricting presentation. And thank you, and thank you, Josh, for being the GIS guy. Can't see you, but appreciate you. Okay. Uh, public participation. Nobody. Okay. So Marty, we have a, a consider approval of an employee retention stipend?
Yes, um, in your packet, we have a recommendation, uh, for the approval of retention stipend here towards the holidays. Um, recommendation is, uh, before you, inside of your packet, split into three different categories, teachers, nurses, other professionals, paraprofessionals of manual trades, and actually considering substitute teachers that have worked at least twenty hours per week since either their hire date or the beginning of school, would also be included in this consideration as well. This consideration is being provided through extra funding, which retention opportunities are allowed in extra funding. It's about two million dollars of that extra funding, um, as well. We really are proud of our teaching staff and our faculty and support staff for all that they've done to this point. Um, it's been a, a heck of a challenge over the last two years, almost. Can you believe that we're talking about two years? But certainly they've done a heck of a job this year. We're really proud of them choosing Tyler ISD to work at. When you start talking about vacancies, I think we're at six, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Teaching vacancies?
Yeah.
Uh, we carried three at the beginning of school, we're up to six now. Uh, but if you take that in comparison to, say, like a clean ISD that has about forty thousand students, they're upwards of two hundred to two hundred and fifty vacancies. So we're really appreciative of our teaching staff. That's teaching vacancies. Uh, of our teaching staff, we're also very appreciative of our support staff, as well as does take a collective team effort.
Okay, thank you. Um, is anybody have any questions or comments about this proposed stipend?
Comment in general, I, I, I'm appreciative, and I'm sure the subs are appreciative too, the addition of them in this inclusive area. I had a lot of comments regarding subs, feeling like they would not appreciate it within the district, and they would not be considered in the situation, so I, I, I'm appreciative of that being inclusive of them at this point, especially the ones working for hours or more.
Yes, sir, we are very appreciative of them as well. Um, we also have a program that we have called Super Subs, um, that we've also deployed out to the campuses to, uh, entice folks to, to substitute teach. Of course, we were a little behind on the, on the actual COVID numbers, but just the, the current atmosphere that we have right now about people wanting to sub, for whatever reason, um, is lacking, we're just trying to be creative on that. So that Super Sub opportunity compared with this opportunity, I think that it can show that the, the district does appreciate those substitute teachers.
Well, I think anytime that we can show a concrete, uh, method of appreciation to the, to the staff is a good thing, so. We're sitting very well with you.
And it's coming out of extra funding, so. For clarification, is extra funding is allowable? Correct, Ms. Bjork?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no shot requirement? No vaccination requirement?
There is no vaccination requirement, Mr. Burdwell. Nor is there any vaccination requirement for anything that we do.
Is it optional funding if you, if, if, uh, if they're vaccinated or not?
Getting the vac, getting the vaccine, Tyler ISD's, um, stance on the vaccine is, is your choice to get the vaccine.
Uh, we don't hold a payment for this, if I don't?
No, everyone's eligible for this. Regardless of your vaccine status.
Mr. Karen.
And November is always a hard time, you get tired as a teacher, you get frustrated, so this money will come in handy and will lift up spirits, and that's what we're all about.
It might not have anything to do with the vaccine, but it will be a shot in the arm. I guarantee you.
And that's something we like to catch.
All right, well, uh, I'll go, go ahead then, unless we have any further comment, um, and entertain a motion on this item.
Um, is that we, um, approve the retention stipend?
Second motion. Yes, second.
Straight out of a Gene Washington play, but she used to say I seconded that motion. Okay, I have a, a motion and a second. Do I, uh, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Guys have it, the motion carries.
Woo hoo.
There you go. Congratulations, everybody. Um, okay, well, we're going to, uh, hold executive session now, so. I'll go ahead and move into executive session. I guess we'll have it right here. What?
Question.
Okay, question.
We tabled an item a few months back about the, um, association with, you had the COVID, about the extension paying, as you think as a fund, paid for the incentive days if an individual got the vaccination and had COVID. We tabled that item, did an expedition on it, uh, we're wanting that you, we're looking to enable, so I'm glad that one way or the other.
Yeah, I think at this point, it's, it's not been asked to be put on the agenda, therefore it's, it's just gone.
Well, anytime you table something, it does kind of hang out there in the cloud.
Yeah.
Um, whether or not that gets brought back is either part of the board operating procedures of whether or not that gets put back onto an agenda or not.
Right. Yeah.
So.
What was the, uh, what was the exact action on it? It was, um, you, you remember that?
Yes, I do. Uh, the board chose to table, um, a recommendation from the administration in regard to, um, COVID leave, similar to what we had this time last year, as paid for, or as mandated by the feds, um, when the pandemic started. We brought back, paired with the, the vaccination incentive, um, the opportunity for those that receive the vaccination, that got COVID, um, to also, also have ten days of, 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 of leave. Now, where they wouldn't take their, their days that they're provided annually. Um, y'all chose to table that.
Because there were concerns over, uh, as I recall, there were concerns from the board over how the staff might respond to that, and, uh, starting to look like maybe it wasn't the best idea, so we tabled it. It hadn't been brought back up. And I'm happy to leave it there. By, judging by the, everybody else, I, I think that was kind of the consensus. So, even the administration. Okay, that answers that.
Yeah.
Um. All right, well, now we'll go into executive session then. I guess we're having it right here.
Actually, we've got a, we've got a room on the other side of the main office.
Okay.
That'll allow us to go to that location.
Okay. Great, thank you.